I'll give it thirty seconds.
Good evening. I'm calling to order the common city council meeting for the city of Brookings at seven P M. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oral call?
Councilor Malbert.
Here.
Councilor Creda.
Here.
Councilor Martin.
Here.
Councilor Fulton.
Here.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
We have a four.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to oral requests and communications from the audience. I have one here that actually came to us in a little bit of a different way. So I'm going to read it first, and then I will get to the rest of them from there in the order that I received them. So the first one actually is from Phoebe Skinner from Gold Beach. And what her comment states is, Dear City Council Members, Mayor Hodges, and City Manager Rundell, I am writing today to advocate for the expansion of the swimming pool season for our community that is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I enjoy the pool for lap swimming. I swam competitively from the time I was six through college. I also take advantage of recreation swim times to have fun with my nephews and to help them become stronger swimmers. When I moved to the South Coast, I was sad to learn that there was no pool in Curry County that was open year-round, and I am quite excited by the prospect of an expanded pool season. As a former swim instructor and lifeguard and avid water sports enthusiast, I believe the pool plays a vital role in water safety education for our children. It also provides an opportunity for real-life engagement, encouraging kids to spend time away from screens, and participate in physical activities that build community connections. Swimming is an essential part of a play-based childhood, promoting health, well-being, and personal growth. Expanding the pool season demonstrates the power and potential for additional opportunities for local governments to collaborate with nonprofit organizations to strengthen our community. In turn, it would provide a platform for developing important life skills such as confidence, discipline, and teamwork for people of all ages. From young children to adults, the pool serves as a space for individuals of all generations to come together, improve their fitness levels, and engage in activities that are both safe and enjoyable for their bodies, whether it be for strength, cardiovascular health, or rehabilitation after an illness or injury. The pool is not just a recreational space, it is a point of pride in our community and the surrounding region. It is a fun, family-friendly environment where traditions of swimming and spending time together can flourish. Additionally, expanding the pool season would provide more opportunities for schools to use the pool for water safety training and physical education programs. It can also provide important employment opportunities for youth, offering them a chance to develop skills and learn income in a positive, community-centered environment. Moreover, the pool encourages independence, especially for older children who are able to visit on their own, passing swim tests, and gaining a sense of accomplishment. It fosters pride and strengthens connections to our local community. In closing, I strongly urge the council to consider expanding the swimming pool season. Doing so would offer more opportunities for community engagement, health, education, and pride, while providing a safe, fun, and beneficial environment for individuals and families in our city. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Phoebe Skinner. Okay, moving on to the in-person comments. Next public comment is for, from, I hope I say this right, Declan Deblar. Come on up. And the general rule is just your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Hodges, all council members. My name is Declan Deblar. I live at five two nine Riverwood Street. I'm here to speak again to expand the season funding for the pool. I've been stationed here for about a year and a half with the Coast Guard, and it's been really great to have the pool open. We at the station use it all the time for our P T tests. We have to take some annually. It's been great. In the past, I've had to drive all the way down to Crescent City and try to work that out with keeping the boat staffed, but now they're really easy to pop over on duty and knock a swim out. In addition to that, I helped out with the junior lifeguard program that just popped up here. And when I first moved here, I was very surprised that there was no pool open year-round. I know Coos Bay has an outdoor pool they keep open, and Fred Under, obviously, is a closed pool, or closed, not an outdoor pool, and they keep around. But yeah, I was kind of disappointed to just swim for a few months a year when we have this huge tourism industry out here, and a lot of people that do get in trouble in the water out here. And meeting a lot of kids in the junior lifeguard program who had a lot of trouble swimming here. I was an ocean lifeguard down in Southern California for a couple of years, and I worked junior lifeguards down there as well. And it's just night and day versus what the kids can do here versus the kids down south. And I think having a pool here would really up the athletic ability and swimming ability of all these kids, especially in water that is cold and like water is kind of dangerous associated with the currents and all the structures we have in the water here. So I think it'd be a great opportunity. Already, after the season expanded here, I've seen kids from the junior lifeguard program join the swim team, swim up here. And I've seen kids also enjoying the open time at the pool too, just with that channel. And I think it's really important, the channel to be open for kids in the future. And I think it'd be huge for the Coast Guard as well to have a pool that we could use more often for training versus thumping kids in the harbor to work on their swim skills in their dry suits, and it's not, or beneficial, they can't work a whole lot on techniques when their hands are freezing off. So in closing, the pool has been really amazing to have here. It's been awesome to have an updated season with more time to swim, and I think it would be very beneficial to this community to open longer and see if we can keep it around. Have a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Morgan Pearlmeter?
Yeah, it's a hard one. Hi, I'm Morgan Pearlmeter. I also live on five two nine Riverwood Street. And every time I go to the pool, it's actually really busy. And I didn't, I didn't know if it would be, but I always see kids swimming, and I love to lap swim in it. I was also a California lifeguard, and then I moved up here and worked at the junior lifeguard program. And actually, the junior lifeguard program has some really amazing, like, already athletic kids. And I just know that they, if they had like the ability to go to swim practice and stuff, they would be really amazing lifeguards. And I know that in Oregon, we're trying to build more of a beach lifeguard kind of scene because we don't really have that many, and a lot of people drown on this coast. So yeah, I think it would just be amazing, and I think it would really help the community a lot, and I look forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Connie Hunter.
I'm Connie Hunter, and I'm here tonight for Curry County Suicide Awareness Prevention Council. I don't want to slow them roll. Whatever they're doing, they're doing right. Those who are speaking, you made me proud of the six, Mayor Hodges, city councilors, and city staff, and friends in the audience. Today, February tenth, is the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention's twenty twenty-five Advocacy Action Day. That means people like me, advocates, are supposed to show up and make a point and make a difference. This time, twenty twenty-five, education, research, and advocacy are the three topics. But I'm not going to make it like I did the last few times. Water out of a fire hose for you to listen. I'm going to do one, three different pieces of this puzzle. The next two times, I'll continue this conversation. Anyway, the February tenth honoring is not the same as the one that happened in September, which is observed as Suicide Prevention Day. As suggested by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, I'm providing information regarding suicide prevention, education, advocacy, and research. Over the next few times, I'll speak in public comments, starting with education. I chose the topic of pain management. It's really important to understand that pain management and suicide are related. People with chronic pain are more likely to have suicidal thoughts and attempts. Factors that may indicate a higher risk of suicide among pain sufferers include opioid use. A higher dose of opioids are associated with a higher risk of suicide. Pain duration, people with longer pain duration are more likely to have suicidal thoughts and pain-related sleep problems. Pain can cause sleep problems, which can contribute to hopelessness and suicidal thoughts. So what can clinicians and providers do? Routinely screen patients for depression and assess their risk of suicide. They can be aware of the details in the state of Oregon's opioid tapering guidelines, which I had the opportunity a number of years ago to sit on the Oregon Health Authority's Public Health Task Force to write those opioid tapering guidelines from the standpoint of lived experience. For ten years, I was prescribed opioids for neck injuries. After I had surgery, then, it was not an issue for that. But I had another injury, and I've continued to take opioids for a long period of time. Having had the opportunity to speak and participate in that task room, I feel like the opioid tapering guidelines really do address individual needs and the fact that tapering of opioids was not done well in the past. The next time I speak, I'll be speaking about the importance of advocacy and the value of the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council, and will look to ask the city of Brookings to share in our efforts to prevent suicide among our seniors and our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Jane Opiet.
Good evening. My name's Jane Opiet. I live at one nine, one five nine four three Shortways. And it's nice to meet my city government. So that's cool, baby. Anyway, I'm here to advocate for the pool being extended. Besides, I, I, I can't say much more than Phoebe said. I used to be a teacher, so I see how we could enrich the kids' programs at the high school with swim team and things like that. But personally speaking, I have arthritis really bad, and I'm pretty much in chronic pain when I'm not doing terrestrial things, but when I get in the pool, I can hop, jump, do jumping jacks, run. And there's also a social element that helps for seniors at the pool that I think is really, really beneficial. So if somehow we can figure out where to find the money, if we could extend our pool season, it'd be really happy. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a theme here. Dana Raish. I probably butchered that, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Dana Raish, and I live at nine eight zero seven five Prince Street in Harbor. And I'm also here to advocate for as much pool time extension as we can get. I recently retired. I was a union construction worker for almost forty years from California. I grew up in San Diego, so always swimming, the beach, you know, very active. So fast forward to now, I'm a little beat up, you know, knee, knee surgery, shoulder surgery. So being in the pool and taking the water aerobics class has been amazing. It's been the best physical therapy, you know. I took physical therapy down in Stanford when I was there, and it doesn't even hold a candle to pull the flame to sneeze these classes. So I'm really appreciative, and like Jane said, there's a social bond, you know, and the whole class is very supportive. Everybody there is really friendly, you know, from staff and everybody. And it's great to see the kids show up, but it's all ages, and I'm really, really glad it's here and it's convenient. And, you know, I've been going six days a week, and it's fantastic. And I love that it's outdoor, you know, I'm not really a big fan of an indoor pool. So I love it. I'm a big fan. I'll continue to get season passes as long as I'm here. So thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and last one. I'm going to go with Reverend Durham Daisy.
Dennis. Hi, Dennis Daisy. I live at Humboldt Hills Park, up there, one five seven six five, I live on one. And Dennis Daisy, and moved here a year ago, actually, it was in April, then pastor most of my life. I've reached about four thousand messages. This is, my niece knocking, she's a big meeting for you. I gave an email to Mayor Hodges, and I was very appreciative of how quickly he got back to me. I wasn't expecting to get an email back before the end. So that tells me something about this council and stuff, so I'm very pleased, as I said in the first meeting. So I was told by my therapist, I said, you, you really need to try this water therapy. Although I'm not a swimmer, and I haven't done any of that stuff, and it was very hard for me to get started. Once I got started, and I was Stacy and the others there, my therapist said, whatever you do, keep doing it. And when I heard this was going to be open for three months, I thought, I'll just try the first month, see how it is. Well, I'm loving it, and I'm really hoping that you can find the funds to be able to continue on the process here because it means a lot to me. And I just don't know if I'd make the drive anywhere else. It's just so much easier here. And I think the Brookings and Harper area is big enough that we should be able to do something. But this is just for the seniors, and I'm hearing the comments about for youngsters, the Coast Guard, different things. I thought, wow, this is a big thing for here. So anyway, appreciate your time, appreciate all that you guys do for our community. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item E, Consent Calendar. That is to approve the council minutes for January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, accept planning commission minutes for December third, two thousand twenty-four, accept planning commission twenty twenty-four year in review, reappoint Gerald Wolkowitz to planning commission, reappoint Anthony Bond to planning commission, and appoint Amanda Whitmore to planning commission. Any comments or discussion? You don't get a chance to review, any questions?
Just make a comment that I really appreciate all of the efforts from the folks currently serving on the planning commission, and I really appreciate those who are willing to dedicate more of their time and volunteer to serve on the planning commission. It certainly speaks to their character.
Thank you. Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent cal, excuse me, consent calendar.
I second.
Call the question.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Fulton.
Yes.
Councilor Creda.
Yes.
Councilor Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item F, Staff Reports, Public Hearings, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Final Orders. Number one is the South Coast Community Aquatics Pool Management Agreement Extension.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges, members of the council. You may recall in spring of two thousand twenty-three, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding with South Coast Community Aquatics to operate the municipal pool to gain a full understanding of pool operations and to potentially operate the pool in the future. This would ultimately benefit the city and provide the, and community by providing a management structure that would require fewer city resources and potentially lengthen the pool season under SCCA management. Council's consensus was to move forward with the SCCA pool management agreement in, or for twenty twenty-four season. Council approved a management contract with SCCA to operate the pool during the twenty twenty-four season without staff, city staff resources, and provided funding in the amount of eighty thousand for operational costs, with additional ability to request additional funding if the costs exceeded the amount due to uncontrollable circumstances for which the city will consider in good faith. SCCA is proposing a contract extension that includes an additional funding request and potentially extending the season from the standard three months to six months in this next twenty twenty-five season. Contract highlights for twenty twenty-five include funding requests from eighty thousand, which was for the twenty twenty-four season, to eighty-eight thousand for the twenty twenty-five season, which you may recall the season is June, July, and August. Optional three-month season extension would be basically the adding May and September and October for a total request of a hundred and fifty thousand. SCCA is actively applying for grants to cover the additional eight thousand requests for the standard three-month season, as well as an additional seventy thousand requested for the six-month season extension. SCCA is also requesting the city process a final payment of ten thousand for the twenty twenty-four season to be used for expenses during the winter season opener previously approved by council at the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. The original agreement established a budget of eighty thousand for the season, but the remaining ten thousand was to be used as a buffer and, if needed, would have to go through a formal request to council. So we're seeking direction from council on the two options for the twenty twenty-five season and to authorize final payment. You'll see on the staff report, the first two motions are an either-or. One for, the first one is for the three-month standard season, the second one is for the six-month standard season, and the third motion is to authorize the payment to SCCA for ten thousand. That's all I have. And we have the letter of request attached, some financial information, contract extension, and we have SCCA members in the audience to answer questions or maybe come up to the podium and speak if they wish.
Yeah, would, you like to come up and say something? Feel free.
Val Early, President, South Coast Community Aquatics. I'm not in this far away because I caught the crud, so I apologize for if I asked anything. So SCCA really appreciated all of your support in the Winter Pilot Project. It has been really successful, but one of the biggest things is that we encountered much higher propane costs than we, than we anticipated and that we budgeted for. And thus, we would like to be able to utilize the additional ten thousand dollars to help cover some of those costs. We have applied for some assistance for that at this time, and those, those funds just have not come through at this time. We did get some assistance during our Winter Pilot Program for programming for the kids. So we were able to offer open swim for free on Saturdays, and we offered some family night swimming, and also offered some swim team opportunities for our junior lifeguards during the, during the week when the Crescent City Swim Team was, was practicing. So all of those things, we did get some grant funding for, but as far as the utility portion of things, we have not had any response as yet to be able to support that program. So that was the one request. And then based on the, the success of our Winter Pilot Program, we would really like to extend the season. And I think you can see from our letter, what we're asking for is to have the city council authorize a backstop. We are actively seeking grants. We have engaged a grant writing service here in the, the local area. In fact, Michelle, who is in charge of Big Place West, she grew up here, she was a lifeguard of the pool, she understands the pool, she swam here, she taught kids there, so she's, she's actively pursuing some grants for us because our volunteer board just does not have the capacity to be able to pursue all of that at this time. So we also put in there some information because we realized last year through our efforts that we really, at the foundation of the pool, we needed sustainable management at the pool. We, we did have a manager last year, but the manager was young and very inexperienced and required a and required a lot of time from South Coast Community Aquatics to the tune of probably at least 30 or so hours a week. And as a volunteer board, most of us have, most of us work and so we just don't have that capacity to continue in that realm for another year. So it was really imperative to us to find a manager that would be able to provide that level of expertise and enthusiasm and help to expand the pool. And we have found a candidate and she has accepted on the condition that we get some, you know, that we of course get that little bit of extra funding and then also to come and move the pool forward. So I think you can see from the financial, we did some preliminary financials here. And again, once our winter season is over, we will have the complete financials for our Winter Pilot Project. We are just completing with our accountant, our 2024 financial audit, basically, for our organization to be able to file our taxes. So you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions about the financials. So it looks like your, the revenue difference between the three months and the six months is accounting for kids being back in school and less use. How did you determine the difference of the busy three months versus how many people would be there during the shoulder season?
Well, and part of that was true. We did account for the kids being back in school. We did take a pretty conservative approach based on our Winter Pilot Project and recognizing that we probably have some limited hours based on staffing availability. And also, what we took into consideration was our availability last May when we first opened and how many people bought the year-round passes, that kind of thing, right at the very beginning. So we felt like we took a fairly conservative approach on the six month, from the May to October portion of things. And then the three months is actually based on what we brought in last year. So the three months is based on what we can account for in our accounting for 2024. We fully expect that to go up this year with all of the enthusiasm.
And then I just have a question for staff. So most of this would be for the next budget cycle, correct?
Yes.
And are there any, this additional, I think it's $62,000, the preliminary estimate, are there any concerns about coming up with that in the budget?
I don't believe so at this time. So, I mean, we're still getting ready to start our budget committee meeting and stuff, but I think we could probably shuffle some things around to make it work.
Thanks for this, proposing the longer season and for everybody who came here tonight. So, you know, I think this is definitely something that the community wants and it looks like something that we can make happen. So I'm in support of the six-month period and possibly longer. And I also, I agree that we should take care of the $10,000 for the winter season. So I'm glad to see the enthusiasm about the pool.
And again, any funds that we have left over like we did this year, you know, we would not utilize those. We would return those or we wouldn't request them from the city, which has been what our MO has been so far. So we endeavor to communicate as much as we can with you and let you know how things are going there.
I really want to commend the work that you guys are doing. I took a look at the fiscal year, the last fiscal year numbers when the city was managing the pool and compared those to the 2024 actuals for what you guys, or what you provided here, your numbers, and noticed that in the revenue, just based on the base things, it was an increase of 57% from the prior year. So that speaks highly to the work that you're doing. But in addition to that, you saw other donations and grants and that amounted to a 283.85% increase from the fiscal year prior to that. So I just want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing to volunteer for our community. I think it's important that those things that we feel passionate about and strongly support, the city staff, the council, none of us can meet all the needs of the community on our own. But when we partner together and when we collaborate and work as a team, then we have a greater chance of success. And so I think that this speaks very highly to the work that you're doing and I want to thank you for that hard work.
Thank you. It's, our volunteer board has put in a lot of time and effort. A couple of our board members are here tonight, so thank you very much.
I'm glad you like numbers. It takes a lot of pressure off.
Any other questions?
Oh, I wanted to make one more comment. I also appreciated that you provided the audit because the funds for this come out of taxpayer dollars. And I think it's important that when we partner with organizations, there's transparency to what's happening within those organizations. So I also want to just state that I very much appreciate that because I believe that brings great transparency. We're required to do that as a city and we want to do that as a city and I appreciate those that we partner with doing it as well.
Which one of our goals?
Thank you. That's helpful to us.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
I'm feeling good. I, I've voiced my support of the pool every time, so I don't have much to say here. I mean, I, I just, I wish it could be year-round. I mean, that's, but I know it's one step at a time and we have to, to Counselor Paredes' point, take care of taxpayer money and that's why we're here, to make those decisions. I think we have a few things the city, the city does. Sometimes it's not necessarily just liquid funds, but upkeep of certain parks for activities, softball, things like that. There's also a little golf course up the river that we now assist with and the pool. And so, you know, I think for us tonight, that decision is, you know, how much does the city spend, if you will, put towards one of those activities? And what is the role of the city in that? And, you know, I think I feel pretty confident that we have a certain role. We have, we have a lot of people here. I think, I don't know that there's been a more popular issue between email and people speaking publicly, which is no fun at all. So that tells you how much this community really likes this. And then the part for our youth, growing up here, that means a lot to me as well. So I do think that the city leadership plays a role in giving, giving a healthy activity for our youth and our retired and everyone in between. Any other comments?
I just wanted to follow up with what Tim had mentioned. And you all know I'm a big supporter of the pool and both of my kids were lifeguards there for a couple of years during high school and really, really appreciate what the pool does. But, you know, we're just entering the budget cycle and do we have an understanding of what the implications of the budget are? I feel like we're missing half the puzzle here. I'm all for it if we can afford it. I'm not sure we can or I haven't seen what that impact would be on our budget.
We're doing really well financially right now as far as, you know, revenue. And I believe with the, it is a substantial investment and like some have set up here and, you know, it's an investment in the quality of life and I'm a big, big advocate for that too. You know, as a guy that's been doing this for almost 25 years, people usually come up to me, "You gotta run it like a business." Well, that's true, but I still have not found anybody to show me how to make a library profitable or, you know, some parks profitable. And this is one of those things too. Again, it's a quality of life issue and I feel like staff can definitely find the means to make this happen. I strongly feel that way.
Thank you.
I think that's really a credit to our community because I know many cities in our state are looking at having to cut funding because they just can't make ends meet. So I appreciate that we're in a position that we are able to do something like this and hope that that can continue. Also, we'll encourage community members who find this valuable, donate. Donate to this organization because that helps make those dollars go further.
Good point.
I have one other comment. So this is somewhat related to this, but I talked to Tim earlier today about the State Park Recreation Grants. There's a webinar on Wednesday for local governments to learn how to apply for the current cycle of State Park Recreation Facility Grants. The applications are available now. You can fill them out, but you can submit them beginning April 1st. It's $28 million that the state will be awarding to local governments for recreation and recreational facilities. And I think we should direct staff to participate in that and to develop a grant request for the April submission for a covered enclosure around the pool. An example I mentioned to Tim was the Brookings Inn Resort that used to be the Best Western, the simple structure they have around their pool. And also, Tim suggested reaching out to some other cities in Oregon of how they dealt with going from an open pool to a covered pool and how much that cost. But make this a priority to meet this grant application deadline of the 1st of April to try to move forward. You know, we always talk about it'd be great to have a covered pool, but, you know, at some point we have to take some action. And I think we should seriously consider this during the next budget cycle. And this grant, if the city got a portion of it, is 60%, a 60% grant with a 40% match. I'm in favor of motion number two on this and motion three. But also, I would like to see staff move forward with the grant application for closing the pool.
We apply for those grants all the time. Our staff doesn't raise the capital project to that magnitude, it's gonna take a little longer than this cycle. So I would just opt for that. It's gonna be a really big ask for us to gather the proper information and prepares the grant application in that timeframe. We don't have plans. We don't have, we don't have any idea what it's, something like this would cost and we haven't talked to a schematic design process to do it. So it's extensive to do something like that in that timeframe. So I would propose that it could be potential, if that's a direction we'll go for the next year's cycle.
Quite at least like to see staff begin gathering, you know, sooner rather than later information on what other communities have done and some, some potential costs for doing this.
Understood. And the other side of that is, you know, we have to look at our Parks Master Plan and make sure that we have an addendum to our Parks Master Plan that identifies that as a project. Since it's a big criteria, when we apply for state grants is that it's something the community has voiced and has documented in a document, like a master plan. And I hope we can cover the pool and identify it in our master plan.
And I do believe we're gonna be circling back with the master plan pretty soon in regards to SDCs. And because right now, the master plan's pretty light, I guess you would say, for the parks. And this would be an excellent project for that, so.
I think the community several times has voiced the desire to have a covered pool and we talked about it a lot, but nothing happened. So I'd like to see us at least start moving forward a lot more aggressively than we have.
Certainly.
I agree with everything Counselor Martin just said. We, you know, we talked about this multiple times and it's surprising to hear that we haven't, you know, even gathered a quote, to have an idea about what something like this might cost. I know in the time I've lived here and folks I know that have lived here their whole lives say there's been discussions about getting a covered pool at one point or another. So I definitely would like to see staff move forward in some kind of direction that at least begins with gathering information and working with that Parks Master Plan and getting quotes and trying to get a feel for what something like this might cost. And then, you know, hey, if it turns out that it's something that, you know, we're unsuccessful in a grant, then maybe we can ultimately come up with some kind of a, you know, five-year savings plan or something along those lines. We know what the goal is. We can work towards that goal in earnest and then continue to apply for those grants as they become available.
Sure. And having a full-time grants manager is extremely helpful. She's already been proven to be extremely helpful in endeavors like this, so.
Thank you. Any more comments or should we move to a motion?
I'll make the first motion. I move to authorize a city manager to extend the management agreement with South Coast Community Aquatics to operate the Brookings Municipal Pool for the optional six months through the 2025 season for a total of $150,000.
I second.
Call the question.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
I would like to motion to authorize the city manager to process the 2024 budget and final payment of $10,000 to SCCA for the Winter Pilot Project.
Second.
Go.
Second.
Call the question.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Okay, moving through Item F to number two, the Ransom and Fifth Street Storm Water Repairs.
The public works staff discovered developing sinkhole in the intersection of Fifth and Ransom Streets as well as additional storm pipe failure on a private drive just off Fifth Street in the city vicinity. The two stormwater pipes in question are corrugated and the pipes are 40 years old and the bottom of the pipes are pretty much gone. Project was listed in the city stormwater master plan as a high priority project. Staff reached out to all the contractors and bids were received from two qualified contractors representing the bid cap below. Staff recommending to award this project to the lowest bidder tidewater contractors. If you have corrections to make, McLennan's bid came in at $122,470 and tidewaters was actually $51,500. So the motion tonight would be authorizing city manager to enter an agreement with tidewater contractors for $51,500 for this project, this new project.
Comments?
Then I got the email, so there were some revised numbers that aren't reflected in this. And that was the 55 and 120 or something like that?
$51,500 is what were the motion.
So the proposals are, the numbers on the proposals are there, it's just not?
The totals didn't reflect?
The totals didn't reflect it on the staff report.
And then, and then the second bidder was 120 or something?
122,470.
Any ideas about why there was such a?
The only I can offer is that we, our public work supervisor and I, we walked the projects with all the contractors. They bid on the same thing. The 5R even, we walked with them too and they, they didn't end up submitting a bid, so. But they all had the same scope of work, so I have no idea why they're so far off.
I was on a walk with my dog and I think I was probably one of the first ones that called in that sinkhole. I said, "Hey, somebody get a hold of Tony, there's a little, there was a little sinkhole about that big." And I was like, "Come in there." That thing I think is bigger than that. So I'm glad that, glad that you guys are doing something about it. It's usually how it starts, a little hole and then, you know, the whole bottom of that culvert's probably rotted out and been rotted out for several years, so anyway, thanks. Even though $51,000 is a substantial amount, these can sometimes be a lot more than this, right?
You know, I didn't look at what, I think the projected number in the master plan was a bit higher than this, but there's a portion of that project that's already been completed. So the portion that's remaining right now, this sort of, this really falls in line with that.
I just saying like a sinkhole potentially.
Oh, yeah. For sure.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Further discussion?
The motion would just, it would be 51,500, that last number, just for your notes.
I'll motion to authorize city manager to execute a contract with Tidewater Contractors Incorporated for the Ransom Avenue Stormwater Repair Project in the amount of 51,500.
Second?
Call the question.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, moving on to item F, number three, letter to Governor Kotek in support of suspending new requirements recently enacted from the wildfire hazard map and allowing the Lone Ranch project to continue through to completion.
Yes, Mayor and Council, before you tonight, I had talked with the mayor. We had been contacted by some folks with the Board of County Commissioners. They had fired off a letter, very similar letters to this one, to the governor specifically requesting that the Lone Ranch project be carved out of the initial wildland hazard map. And the reason being is this addition has been in development since 2009. So we strongly feel that this is imperative to, not only to our community, but to the county as well, because this is quality workforce housing that we're talking about. And the folks at South Coast have already spent a substantial amount of money in getting the development off the ground. You know, Tony, what was the, if everything was built, how many units were we talking about in that?
The original DDP identified, I want to say 990 units. Close to 1,000.
So, you know, close to 1,000 units there. And so we feel, you know, that it's imperative that we get the governor's attention. And as I kind of described in my report, you know, this thing's been going on since 2009. January 10th, we just got our list of properties the city owns, which the majority of them are not even in city limits, that are considered in the hazard zone. And we'll have to either appeal or show the course of work of what we're going to do to make those defensible spaces lessen our wildfire chances there. So, but all this is asking is, you know, one of the things that the governor has mentioned over and over and over again, and I sent the council an article that was just written recently. We are, in the entire United States, we are, I think, behind one other state as far as the housing availability. We are second in the United States for not having enough housing for ours. I think the overall state is, the ratio is kind of silly. It's a 1.05, I believe, was for the whole state, and that means for every 100 homes that are, you know, being occupied, there's only five in the market that are vacant. So, and Curry County is definitely one of the ones that's struggling with housing availability. So that's all we're asking. I worked with the mayor in developing this letter to the governor, and all we're asking tonight is for the council's support and sending us to the governor and sending a message that, in essence, as I stated in there, they've kind of moved the goalpost on us right at the end of the game, where we're getting ready to start this development, so.
And I'd like to add to that, that this is a well-thought-out development. I don't want to say it's the largest in the state when all completed, but I think it is, or it's close to it. And to what the city manager stated, the governor herself has made this the number one priority on her yearly list of priorities. Workforce housing is number one. And so I think it's timely and appropriate, and a lot of our planning has already went into it related to where the houses will be built, what they'll be built out of, and to change all that up would be, would handicap the project in a substantial way. And that, that's not even including the extra amount that each house would cost to meet the new standards. So I believe that the letter should be sent.
I'm in complete agreement with all of those statements. This is one of the things at City Day that we were able to strongly advocate for, and I think this has huge potential for our community, and it's been a long time in the work, and a lot of resources have already been dedicated to this. And for the state to undermine that project would be devastating. And so I think it's absolutely imperative that we make that known. I would also ask that community members contact our Senator David Brock Smith, contact our Representative Court Voice, and contact the governor herself. This is a public document. You can find this letter online. And I would just ask that you would communicate to the state representatives your support over what the city has stated and how weighty of a matter it is for our community.
Yes.
I think it's a great letter. I appreciate the comments that Counselor Paredes made and that the mayor made. I would suggest adding a CC on this to Senator Smith, Representative Voice, the Speaker of the House, Senate Majority Leader, just so they have it.
Excellent point. I'm in agreement with that, and I'll recommend a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to Governor Kotek in support of suspending new requirements recently enacted from the wildlife hazard map and allowing the Lone Ranch project to continue through completion with those CCs added.
Second?
Call the question.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item F4, appointment of city manager Tim Rundell to Southwest Area Commission of Transportation.
Are you taking that?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, here's.
No, I'll have my representative come up and plead my case. Mayor and Council, this is simply, Tony and I met with officials from ODOT a couple weeks ago, and it was brought to our attention after the meeting that the city of Brookings no longer has a primary appointed representative to the SWACT. It was previously held by Janelle, and this is simply a request to allow myself to sit in with the other representatives. We also have Councilmember Malberg sits in as the city of Brookings elected stakeholder representative.
Curry County stakeholder representative.
Curry County stakeholder. Oh, Curry County, I'm sorry. The Curry County, my apologies. And then Tony serves as the alternate for the city. So all we're simply asking, and the majority of these meetings are held via Zoom, I think on Friday mornings from 10:00 to noon, I believe. So I'll be zooming into those. Every once in a while, they said they try to have, I think, once a year, an in-person meeting. COVID kind of squashed that, but anyway, it's important to be in on these meetings and represent the city of Brookings.
Yeah, there's a lot of good opportunities for upcoming grants, and it's good to keep an ear to what construction projects ODOT has coming in the area that could impact our community. So I'm really glad to hear that you're going to be sitting in on that, and I'll continue to do that as well. And as those opportunities come around and we can discuss those further, and I know that we currently have some agreements. I know that that upcoming development on the, what do we call it, Lucky Lane to Parkview, that sidewalk and crosswalk, that was one of those things that's in conjunction with the work that ODOT's doing. And so anyway, yeah, enough of that, but thanks for stepping up.
Absolutely. I'll say the same thing, that having a seat at the table is really important, having a voice for our citizens as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
I motion to authorize the appointment of city manager Tim Rundell to Southwest Area Commission of Transportation, SDC, Tim Bush.
A second?
Call the question.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Fulton.
Yes.
Counselor Paredes.
Yes.
Counselor Malberg.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving to agenda item G, informational non-action items, and this is the January vouchers. Your review, and there's no questions or comments. We will move on to remarks from the mayor, counselors, and city manager.
My first remark is how wonderful it was to see so many people here speaking on something that they are passionate about, something that's good for our community as a whole. So that was really good to see that. And second thing, I mean, we do have Valentine's Day coming up. At the school system, we have our Week of Love this week and our Kindness Week next week. And so for the next couple of weeks, we are going to be displaying lots of different kinds of ways that we can be kind, and it's just really nice to get our kids talking about it. We had a bingo the other day that they had to go around doing certain things, and I don't care how we get them to do it, as long as they do it, they get in the habit of doing it. But they're having a really great time with it, and just, we could always spread love and kindness everywhere.
Very nice.
I just have a follow-up comment on the fire map issue. It may be worthwhile for the city to reach out to the Talawa tribe and the Confederated Tribe of the Celeste Indians. Sometimes they have a, the governor's office listens to them more. The Cheko tribe is part of the Confederated Tribe of the Celeste, but, you know, a couple of issues, first for the Talawa, there is a shortage of workforce housing that affects their operations. And then, you know, the fire map takes away from opportunities from the Cheko tribal members here. And, you know, hopefully that's an urgent issue for that tribe as well. And, you know, the governor's office may listen more to that than our letter.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank all of you for your encouragement and support for me to attend City Day, and I think it was a learning experience for sure and a fruitful time, lots of connections made. So I was grateful to be able to meet with our, so many of our state representatives. We actually got roundtable discussions of a lot more time than I think what can often be typical. So I'm very grateful to the mayor of Gold Beach, who helped take me under a wing and get me to be able to participate in all those things. So I appreciate our fellow council in Gold Beach.
Hey, nice. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn at 7:58.